Hey, good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite all of you to order the city council workshop, special meeting of the city council for July 25th, 2022. Nancy, could you please call the roll?
Bancroft.
Here.
Missione. Patrilla.
Here.
Warball.
Here.
Besner.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Skolcitus.
Here.
Calamaris.
Here.
Hayleyner.
Here.
Bongard.
Here.
Hey, thank you. Wow, this is really exciting and cool that there's so many people here. Thank you for coming this evening. I'm just gonna make a few comments and I'll let everyone know what the agenda is for the evening within my comments. So, tonight's discussion about the old police department site is one that I know many of you have been anxiously awaiting. I think St. Charles is fortunate that we have the opportunity to have these conversations, having a river that runs right through our town and developable land for whatever use that might be. We are a unique and desirable community and are excited for the development opportunities that it brings. I would like to run through a little bit about the background and agenda for this evening before we get started. So here's the timeline. In June 2020, the city discussed issuing an request for proposal, otherwise known as an RFP, for the old police station site. However, due to the impact and uncertainties related to COVID pandemic, the city council paused the process. At fall workshop on September 25th, 2021, the council directed staff to reissue a revised RFP that focuses on high-level concepts. The RFP was posted on November 15th, 2021. Responses were due March 15th, 2022. We received four proposals from proven development teams. Upon receipt of the proposals, staff reviewed the concepts relating to zoning, financing, timeline, and scope. Staff has spent time meeting as a group of directors to lend their expertise and knowledge to providing input to the technical aspects so that we, as policymakers, can make informed decisions. After vetting the plans, staff generated a list of follow-up questions that would allow the city council to better compare and assess the proposals. Developers were sent follow-up questions on April 27th, 2022, and responses were due on May 27th, 2022. I want to take a moment to outline tonight's meeting, the purpose and the action. So the intent of tonight's meeting is to discuss a vision for the site from the city council. I want to encourage all council members up here to imagine what they believe would be the best addition to the site for the future of St. Charles. It's very rare that a city has an opportunity to develop such a large piece of prime riverfront property in their downtown, and I urge all of you to consider that tonight. Since we received concept-level proposals, there are many details of each project that will need to be discussed but will not be discussed this evening. The goal of tonight is to have council-based discussion and narrow the four proposals down to two. Before asking for each Alder Person's top two proposals, we will then take public comment. More opportunities for community feedback will be available at the next and subsequent steps of the process. In addition, council proposals will be available to be viewed on the city website now that they have been discussed by the council. So, all the proposals will be available, and there's videos that our economic development director have provided informative for city council that will all be available for viewing after tonight. After that, staff will meet with the top two developers to further clarify and refine plans based on our feedback this evening. The next step would be for the two developers to have formal presentation in front of city council where we would also engage again, public feedback. Following those presentations, I'm going to seek direction from city council to engage one developer in a formal process. Please understand that all projects before you will likely change as we continue to refine the needs of the community for the site, and that is to be expected. For that reason, please keep your comments high-level and do not focus too much on specific details. I have met with staff to review proposals. I have also met with the majority of Alder Persons to discuss their vision and answer questions about the history and background for the site. As a point of clarification for the community and the city council, the proposal staff is presenting to you tonight do not have the municipal building as a developable opportunity. I have communicated that this building will not be a part of the project. If anyone on council disagrees with that, you can speak up during the discussion portion, and this is based on going back and looking at meetings and retreat minutes, which I'm sure all of you have paid attention to, and coming to the conclusion based on council's feedback now and most recently. In a moment, I will turn things over to our economic development director, Derek Cowley. Prior to this meeting, Derek sent council members the informative video I referenced about each project. Derek will very briefly run through the projects. I then will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Bancroft. He will be the facilitator of the comments and discussion up on this day, this evening. I would like to remind council that it is important this evening to share comments centered around your vision for the site, which could mean a variety of things, and I will name some of them. We could do nothing here. We could make this land a park. We could have a mixed-use development. We could have residential. I would like most of the time spent on that discussion, and that's what Alder Person Bancroft will assist in. In the interest of everyone's time this evening and for effective dialogue, I would like to close the workshop by 7:00 PM if possible. If there are any questions about the proposals or process, staff will be here to answer questions. The action tonight, again, is a reminder, is to meet, is really to meet with the goal to have an understanding of what the majority of council's vision is and narrowing to two opportunities just to help us move things forward. And just my last point is that I think this is an exciting time for St. Charles, and I'm really looking forward to hearing feedback from council. So, at the moment now, I'll turn it over to Derek to provide us a little snapshot of the four developments for council plans.
Good evening, Congressman Cowley, Economic Development Director. Council, I know that you all were given access to a video I created which kind of went in...
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Sure. Can you hear me now?
No.
All right, well, I guess I'll just have to, I'll just speak as loud as I can.
Must have another microphone that would be more helpful.
You're loud if you talk into the mic.
All right, this is better. Check, check one, two. Okay. All right. Counsel, so I know that you were given access to a video which I created which went into more detail on these sites or all these concepts. Basically, I'm going to do a condensed version of that. This PowerPoint is exactly the same that was in the video, though, and as the mayor said, that will be posted on our website tomorrow. Just to start out, the project site area, you can see over here, this is the map of the police station site. This is where the current building, the building is currently located, but then there is also possible developments that could be included on parcel A, B, and C. Starting out with the developer, Flaherty &amp; Collins, they're based in Indianapolis. They were formed in 1993, a pretty large company. They focus on multifamily or mixed-use development, market rate, affordable housing, mid and high-rise. Primarily, most of their development is taking place in the Midwest and South. To get into their development specifically, first you see in the background here is a rendering of the project that they're proposing. This is a two-building design. We see one building in the rendering right here. Kind of the general facts of the project is 216 residential units, a small amount of retail, 3,000 square feet, total square footage of 450,000, and then parking at about 470 parking stalls. This is just an aerial view of what it would look like. There would be a west building and an east building over here along the middle here. This is Riverside. Looking inside the building, interesting concept here, here you have the ground floor plan. This would be Riverside, and you would turn into the building. This would be turning into a parking deck, and then you would basically park in the parking deck and walk directly into your apartment unit, and it would be like that on the second, third floors, and then the fourth and fifth floors would just be apartments. Similar to the east building, it would be a very similar concept, coming into a parking deck, walking directly into your bedroom, or apartment, sorry. I have the apartment mix right here, breaking down between studios to three bedrooms. Target market would be young professionals, empty nesters. Rental rates for the apartments would be about 181 to 273 per square foot. Estimated total project cost would be $53 million. They're estimating a gap right now of $9.6 million. As far as financing goes, they say this would be achieved by traditional bank financing as well as public-private partnership. They're expecting the city to basically fill in the gap of $9.6 million in incentive, but would also assume that the city would pay for the parking garage. And then this is their timeline down here, essentially with construction would potentially be starting next year. That concludes the first one, which would be Flaherty &amp; Collins. Moving on to the next summary, which would be T2 Capital, who also has a co-developer, Retown. T2 Capital is based in Wheaton. They're formed in 2011. Again, project mix is multifamily, mixed-use, office, residential, restaurants, retail, do a little bit of everything. Again, focusing on the Midwest and South, and then again, their developer, their co-developer is Retown. Looking at their project, it is a phased project here. It's made up of seven different buildings. Here, in the green would be Phase 1, and the red, Phase 2. Phase 3 would be here in the orange, and then in the yellow, you have two different parking decks that could be potentially constructed. This would be a mixed-use development, 149 apartments, 51 hotel room, or 51-room hotel, one restaurant space, one event space, and then some additional commercial retail, which would be kind of scattered throughout the development, but a lot would be focused in Phase 3. And then there would be two parking garages, potentially. They do provide an option where you could have a parking garage up here in this lot, which is currently owned by Baker Church, and right here, next to the development yellow, they also provide the option that you could not do the parking garage up here, up the hill, but do a larger five-story deck closer to the development. This was just a breakdown of the site plan of where the multifamily and where the hotel and commercial would go. Building 2 here, this would be where a large portion of the commercial, the hotel, would be the event center and the restaurant. Apartment mix would range from studios to three bedrooms. Rental rates would average out about $2.50 per square foot, and then the commercial, they would expect the lease for $25 per square foot. Parking, I already went into this in detail a little bit, but you can see here, option 1, you have two parking decks, and then option 2 would be one parking deck, and this would just be a matter of what the city would prefer. There's advantages to both. This developer did include some green space along here, along Phase 3. As far as financing goes, they would expect this to be a $53 million project. Again, traditional bank financing with a component of public-private partnership. As far as incentive goes, there wasn't a number attached to this, but they would expect one, for the property to be given at a zero basis, and then also that the city would be constructing a, or sorry, the city would be funding the improvements in the right-of-way. So you're talking about streets, sidewalks, street sakes, and then probably most importantly, the parking garage or garages. And then also asking for any fees associated with the project to be waived. This is just one other rendering that they provided from the river. The third one we'll move on to, this would be the Murphy Development Group. Developer background, based in Chicago, formed in 2011. Project types, multifamily, hospitality, office, and mixed-use. Primarily based in Chicago, but they do have some other projects in the Midwest, and they've developed quite a bit, 2.5 million square feet of commercial properties. Looking at the concept that they have proposed here, it's a five-to-seven-story building over here. This would be a five-story building. On this wing over here, it'd be a seven-story building. 138 apartments, one restaurant, which would be located right here along the river, and then one commercial space, which would be 3,000 square feet along Riverside over here. Different from all the other proposals is that they are not currently looking at the current parking lot behind City Hall here. They are only focused on the PD site right here. Just to look at, we'll get a closer look at this on some of the other slides, but you can see that this little area here, this is a platform, this is actually what would be considered the second story. The first story would be parking, that would be going towards the commercial space and the residence, and this is what they call an amphitheater seating. So, keeping this, some green space here, you could see people could sit here, they could have a band or some type of event playing down here. This would remain public space. Some portions of this area up here would be public, but some would be reserved for the residents of the building. As I mentioned, they did put in their proposal that they were considering doing another development here, what is in the parking lot. However, they indicated that there wasn't enough room to include a parking structure at all, so they opted to not put it in there, stating that basically if you were to put a structure there with parking, it would block the State Street views. They are open to entertaining this or having a discussion on this piece if that's what council would desire. Looking at the floor plans over here, we have the first level here, so this is, as I said, primarily parking. You have the retail space right here on Riverside, and then up here, you would have the restaurant that would face the river. This is just the floor plan for the second level. Here, you can start to see that there are some apartments. They do have some amenities, a fitness center, and then just other blank boxes that they have labeled as amenity, and then you can see the outdoor space right here. The apartment mix is here, ranging from one bedroom to three bedrooms. In total, there'd be 138 parking stalls, which matches the number of apartments. This is just another view of what the development would look like aeroly. You can see the development over here, and then kind of maintaining this existing green space along the parking lot and the river. Just a rendering, looking, this would be the amphitheater seating over here, and then over in the distance, this would be the restaurant and outdoor seating. For project costs and financing, they're estimating this would be a $60 million project. This would be traditional bank financing, and at the time, they are not requesting any incentives. This was clarified with them that right now, they think they could do this project without getting an incentive from the city. Just one last rendering that was provided. And then this would be our last proposal, which was submitted by Frontier Development, and they have a co-developer, the Prime Group. Frontier Development is based here in St. Charles. I think council is well aware of the projects that they have done. I just put one photo up here of the Graceful Ordinary, which was, of course, developed by Frontier, and you can see the photo here. Because we know Frontier so well, I decided to give a little bit more background on the Prime Group. Based in Chicago, formed in 1982. Project types is a wide range. They basically do a little bit of everything, multifamily, mixed-use, all the way to industrial. A lot of developments in Chicago that have also branched into other places, for example, Dallas and Houston, and they've developed or repositioned or acquired $10 billion worth of residential or commercial properties. You can kind of see some of their projects down here, which you can see are quite large. Project quick facts, you can first see the rendering of what this development would look like here. This would be a six-story building plus a parking garage that we'll get a look at later. This would be 107 residential units. The residential units would be based over here, which would be the north end of the project. Four restaurants. You would have a restaurant on the ground floor over here, facing the river, on the top floor up here, and then two kind of tucked into where the hotel would be, which would be on this side. So this project would include 164-room hotel, which would be over here, a spa and fitness center, which would be on this side, and then a conference space, which would be on the south end of the building. Just kind of an aerial view here of what this would look like. Just want to point out the outdoor plaza space. This would be 85,000 square feet and encompass this whole area. The developer would be looking to maintain control and programming of this area, and you can see here that they've included a ban shell. This is just what the first level would look of the development, so we get a glance of the parking garage here. We'll get a little bit of a sense on the next slide, I think, of what that, the size of what that would be. But again, first floor, we have the plaza in the middle, they have the ban shell, a splash area, and then you also have a restaurant that shows up here, and over here, the fitness center, again, residential on this end, hotel, conference space on this end. They did give some detail on the style of the plaza that they would like to construct, calling it Plaza San Carlo. Basically, they're kind of looking for that old world charm. And this is a profile of the building, and just want to show the size. First, I'll point out that underneath the primary structure, there would be additional parking underneath it, down here, so you drive underneath this, and this would actually be the plaza, so you'd be parking underneath the plaza in the building itself. And then across the street, so right here would be Riverside, and then you'd have an additional parking structure that would be kind of built into the hill. Just the floor plan of what the other upper floors would look like. Again, hotel, residential, and then you have on the top floor, an additional restaurant. For total project cost and financing, this would be a $150 million project. They're looking, or they would go through traditional bank financing to fund 105 million. They would be doing sponsored equity, or equity that they would put into it would be 25 million, and then as far as requested incentives, it would be 20 million, and they're asking that that would come from TIP revenue bonds. As far as revenues, rental rates for the apartments, they would be expecting $3 per square foot. For commercial, they're expecting $40 per square foot, and I should mention that they have already started a hotel feasibility study just to see how viable a hotel would be there, and if it is, what type. They did include some preliminary estimates of what the hotel rates would be at this hotel, starting at 240. There would be 40 Kings for that price. They would have one presidential suite, which would come in at $750 a night. And that's the summary of the proposals.
Thank you, Derek. Appreciate that. Now I will turn it over to Todd. He's going to guide discussion from the council perspective and questions.
Okay, great. Before we do that, does anybody have questions for Derek? Before he, sorry.
That's all right. I'll just be over there.
Stay close. We're good? So...
We're not taking public comment now. Sorry, this is council discussion first.
So, from the council standpoint, I go back to, I guess it was June of 2020 when we started down this road, and this is really a discovery phase for us to know about our site. I mean, this is just a learning process right now. You know, we went out with an RFP, we could have gotten 200. We got four, and, you know, maybe some surprises, maybe not some surprises. I'll give a couple of just observations, and then I'd like to start just going down the road of getting council feedback on maybe some sort of higher-level questions. So the first is, obviously, all four of them have a residential component. That shouldn't be a surprise. The site itself lends itself to a residential use, being on the river. By the same token, happens to be, you know, one of the most preferred asset classes in real estate right now. So, you know, from that standpoint, I don't think that's a surprise. I was a little surprised at how high the studies came out in terms of rental rates in St. Charles, but that's, you know, that's sort of a function of the world right now. So, that's interesting to me. I would have been more skeptical of those two years ago than I am now. I think those numbers are high and are probably going to continue to go up because we have a housing shortage. You know, I think, again, with multifamily being a preferred asset class, you can get it financed, lenders believe in it, equity is available for it, although Illinois does have its challenges at times with, because of real estate taxes and a variety of things. I think that this particular use is definitely, you know, doable. You know, I think that when we go through and think about these submissions, maybe the first question that would be easy for people to comment on is, you know, just generally, what do you think of the four submissions? Don't narrow it, don't tell me your best, don't, what do you think of the uses? What do you think of what you've seen now? Were you surprised, were you not surprised? I think I'd like to start there, and then maybe we can take the discussion to the next couple of questions, just to get people talking. I'm gonna start down with Alderman.
Okay. Alderman. Obviously, I went into this very open-minded. You know, with St. Charles kind of being built based on, you know, entertainment, it has for a long time. You know, when I look at something like the Arcata Theater, when it was built in, what, 1928, there was 5,000 residents in town, and they built it for 1,000 seats, so obviously they were building it to attract people, right? You know, Hotel Baker, built to attract people. Pheasant Run, built to attract people. So when I was looking at these, you know, I wanted to have something personally that was a wow, a wow factor, but it also had to, you know, public use was very important as I looked at it, because, you know, this is city-owned property, which is taxpayer-owned property. So, not surprised by a lot of the residential-only proposals, pretty much, but I did want to see some kind of mixed use with also, you know, public use on top of it.
And that's where I'll lead into what Alderman Weber was saying. I, too, was surprised that out of all four proposals, it wasn't more heavily weighted on some type of retail, commercial use. I know they've all sprinkled a little bit in there, and time will tell what kind of retail we're gonna need down the road, but I'm more comfortable with a project that has the opportunity for retail versus moving forward with residential only.
Right?
Okay, well, some of this information I just got about an hour ago, so I'm kind of playing catch-up here, but I'm gonna say some of them are really just too dense, too dense, not enough public amenities. It is public property now, so it really, like that 85,000-square-foot plaza is owned by the developer, so that's not open to the public to use at will. So I have concerns about the level of public amenities available to the people out there. I think it's too dense. I'd like to see some options with condos, a sense of ownership here, give people an opportunity to buy. Maybe there's some apartments there. I like the idea of restaurants being over there. You know, the height of the buildings, I think, are a little too tall. What impact will it have on the neighborhood such as Potawatomi, being near that neighborhood? I have a lot of questions. I have questions that I like to ask the developers directly, that maybe they can only answer. I think there's potential with some of these. I just think they need to be refined quite a bit. I'd love to hear public comments from the residents, because this is public property. It belongs to the people, and I'd love to hear what they have to say. One other thing is, I just, on the Frontier submission, I know you clarified that they're not interested in the municipal building, but what I see are two missing buildings on that plan. And what concerns me is that concept was accepted that way, out of the scope, it went out of the scope of the RFP, and it shouldn't have been accepted when the scope did not include the municipal building and it did not include those two city buildings.
Right, just to be clear, I mean, you used the word "accepted," and I want to be really clear. You know, it's my understanding what happened was, we got four submissions. You got all four of them, and that's what we're looking at right now. This isn't really about accepting and rejecting, it's really more about talking about what people's vision is. So I appreciate your comments at the beginning of that, where you were talking about, okay, well, maybe they're too high, maybe they're too dense, maybe you don't like apartment uses, you know, and trying to get a flavor for where your head is at in terms of what your vision is for the site, but I don't think that this is an acceptance or rejection stage with these four.
I appreciate that, but when I see them missing and there isn't, let's say, a letter of attraction, or some sort of correction, like, hey, that was done in error, because those are historical buildings or landmark buildings, and it just, to me, I think there's a lot of people out here that appreciate that. Everything else, I think, has potential, but that there, to me, threw me when I saw that, because it's like, why go outside the scope? Why do it? You know, why not? The other three stayed within the scope of the RFP, and so that concerns me a little bit, and I'm just putting that out there. But for the most part, I think there should be more of a public amenity, like an amphitheater. Make it bigger, make it public.
So you're thinking, just again, so I'm an active listener, so I ask a lot of questions when people start. So what you're thinking is something maybe a lot less than what this RFP has generated.
Yes.
Maybe it's much more of a public place as opposed to private ownership, private development, private...
Right. My vision for this, and I'll just put it out there, is to have a pretty good-sized amphitheater, then maybe a single building that's curved, that wraps around that amphitheater. Upstairs could be a restaurant with balconies overlooking the amphitheater and the river. Maybe downstairs is some sort of commercial space, or another restaurant, or children's museum, maybe a combination of things, and maybe you've got a brick plaza that you can host the farmer's market. I mean, I'm not opposed to having a building there, it's just I think it needs to be scaled down.
And I would submit, then, and this is, I'll frame it in a question, so we got four proposals in, you saw the four proposals, all of them had a residential component, some No one submitted an amphitheater or a children's museum or any kind of a public use like you're describing. So what that tells me is, the private sector isn't going to, isn't going to do that. What that tells me is that interest wasn't out there and so that would have to be driven by the council. Would you agree with that?
I disagree. Right, right. No, I, I got you. And I, and I disagree because the RFP didn't ask for it. I asked for this stuff in a public meeting and it was not put in the RFP. So that's why I wanted to ask the developers, would you be willing? And if the answer is no, the answer is no. Or a combination, or maybe some of it is private and maybe some of it is public. And maybe that's part of the negotiation. Hey, you know what? You can do this, but we need this in return. So I'm not like, it's all this or all that. I mean, I'm open to, to working with, with all of them.
What, what you described as your vision sounded like it pretty much took up the site, but maybe, maybe it doesn't.
It doesn't take up the whole, whole site, but, you know, you don't know unless you ask the developers. And if they're not here, we don't know what, because some of them put in their forms, we're open to whatever. Talk to us. So we're, I want, I want to make sure we have that opportunity and if they're not, they're not. But I just don't want to rush through this and just say, well, we missed an opportunity to have something really, really cool. Resident, I get it, residential's a...
There's one thing we can, we can't be accused of and that is rushing through this process.
Right, right.
There's no question about that.
And I'll, I'll leave one more thing out there and then I'll move on, is, is I'm not a fan of the hotels over there. I, I don't think we need hotels over there. I'm concerned, and I don't know, but maybe traffic with Potawatomi, you know, just congestion, density. Who's going to use the plaza? If there's a hotel that's going to be consumed all the time, that's not really going to have a lot of public use. I don't think that opportunity's going to be there. So I'll, I'll leave it at that and I'll collect some more thoughts here, so.
Thanks, Brian. David?
I'd like to, you know, in general, in terms of my vision, mixed use for sure. I think of these four that we, we received, two, I'm not really interested at all without going into detail. One is very grand. I appreciate that. And one is a little more humble, if you will. So I know the term bookends has been thrown around in our discussion, so I appreciate, you know, the grand and the humble, you know, maybe the, the truth is in the middle somewhere. I do want open space, per what my colleagues have been saying as well. I think there's opportunity for discussion. I would not specifically, I know we're talking high level, I agree with Brian. I, I, I'm not supportive of a hotel, but I think it's prudent that we do a, a study, so that's good. But mixed use, more open space, I think less is more, kind of sums up my, my vision generally.
Just to, so mixed use, are you, are you of the mind, mixed use meaning other retail uses, other restaurant uses? And again, this is just trying to get...
Sure.
Flesh out what your comment is. Or are you thinking, like Brian, amphitheater, children's museum?
Um, yeah, well, I, I'm not going to get into the weeds specifically about a museum per se, but yeah, for sure. I, I know residential's going to have to play a component, is going to play a part in this. Actually do think a couple of those concepts had some sort of amphitheater as well, so which I appreciate.
Certainly, you know, like a plaza.
Plaza, yeah. So I, and that's great. And there were some asterisks, you know, that stated, oh, we're open to discussion, which is wonderful as well. So, yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's going to be, it can't, it can't just be residential. I don't think, I think there was one that was very heavy residential and, and the developer did understand that and has, has tweaked that a bit, but I'm okay with residential, just again, less is more. We, it's got to be a nice balance. There's a lot of changes, I, you know, we're not getting into those details today, but yeah, absolutely, to your point, it's, it has to be a mix of all of that. And, you know, to Brian's point as well, and I agree, I mean, let's ask the question. I hundred percent understand the market is not, the market did not illustrate an interest in a museum or something like that, but, you know, there's just much more discussion to be had.
Yeah, again, my, my observation is, is we got pretty consistent feedback from the market telling us a heavy residential component is, is going to be, you know, what the private sector is going to say. Okay.
You'll, you'll read this later.
Yep. Yeah.
Thanks.
This is nice, it's like a conversation.
Yeah, hi, Ryan.
So I will do my best to not just reiterate what these four gentlemen said. Concerned initially about size and scope of the foot, you know, the footprint in that space, traffic. We haven't talked a lot about the impact potentially from the fire department being right there, whatever you mean. My initial thoughts, I am not interested in residential down there.
Is there one?
I am not interested in using that space for primarily residential. I feel like there are other, there are other places within the town, projects we've already approved, things that are going up down the river, that seem to check those boxes, that seem to accomplish that. I like the idea of that space being a magnet for the city at large, something, whether it is a mix of, you know, green space with an amphitheater, understanding that to get somebody to build that, right, how are you going to make that work revenue-wise? To me, of the, of the four proposals, there was only one that was actually trying to take the ball in that direction. I feel like we can accomplish meeting residential demands other ways than using this space. Now, at the end of the day, if we can't find a partner who, who can make that vision happen, then maybe we can't do that. But for me, the biggest, the, the most appealing part of this, of this project is it can be an anchor that other parts of the city, of the city build off of. Not just, well, we can, you know, have X amount of units in a restaurant. We could put a restaurant anywhere. You know, we can put a children's museum, which I would love that. But this project should be the guiding vision for what you want to do with the city, up and down the river, east side, west side. So less about, well, what can we do and more about where do you want to go? So.
So, so all four submissions had pretty significant residential components. Were those objectionable to you or are you more interested in how that residential component then relates to the site itself?
Yeah. So two of them are non-starters for me without going to, I mean, two of them are just non-starters. One of them, I think David and I sat through some of the meetings, had some similar vision, but we'd have to get into the details. There's one, there's one that felt to me like it had, it was more open to the idea of what else could you put in this space.
Okay. Thank you. Rita?
Yeah, hi. Like Alderman Werbung, she was late to the party when it came to getting access to the completed proposals. And, and that being said, I, I want to thank you, Derek. He gave me a quick tutorial right before our meeting and, and it was, it was very helpful and I felt a little more confident coming into the discussion because of it. My preference, my vision, that's what you're asking for, right, is a project that complements, complements the municipal campus. And looking at a project that maybe highlights this building, not dwarfs it. I also would like, it's, we have a beautiful public amenity right now. I'd like to see that capped minimally or increased. That is, you know, I would like to see that. And aside from details on specific groups, that's where I'm leaning.
So just a couple of questions. Public amenity, do you mean riverfront, the walking path?
Right, 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 right. Right now, like since, you know, even this evening, I was back and forth here at eight o'clock this morning, I think I shared this with Derek, I was out here at eight o'clock this morning, I was out here at 10 o'clock this morning, I was out here at four, I was out here, you know, at, you know, five. And that park right there is used. I mean, there, the benches are full, there's people up and down the path. Clearly, there's people coming here, you know, so I, I think that's what, and I've often said, you know, we have a beautiful municipal campus. I don't, can't think of any place up and down from here to Chicago that has a city hall or has a city amenity like this, not just the building, but the area. Nobody has one like this with the historical significance, you know, with something we can point to, you know, that this is our town, this is, you know, our, the people's house. Anyway, so that being said, that's what I'm saying, yes. So the projects that have, you know, a little, it was already mentioned, you know, the benchell or the amphitheater seating, something like that that can be used, access to the path, increasing the path maybe, you know, accessibility to Potawatomi. And then I, I didn't write it down, but let me address my thoughts on the residential piece, please. And I, I, I think probably for talk and development, we got to be talking residential. And so I would see whatever was the original footprint of the project, what was the original RFP? We had, you know, Derek was good at pointing out site A, site B, whatever. Let's keep that, the residential piece, and that'd be fine and that would be, you know, get our, get some value. And I have concerns too, but that's probably for later in conversation, on what is going to cost the city? You know, when there's, you know, a project out there that won't cost us too much. And we'll keep what I think is a beautiful amenity already here.
So, so just, it's a fair characterization to say that whatever the use is there, for you, the focus would be all about the attachment of the campus, the...
Complementing it, correct.
The complement.
Right, 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 right. A project to complement, correct, correct. Okay? Thanks.
Yeah. Hey, listen, great proposals, not necessarily surprised the variety of design ideas that came forward. Some of them very bold, obviously. For me, I'm not opposed to mixed use. For me, heavier on maybe the, the commercial side of it, conference center, right? So think about, for us, it's a unique opportunity for us to add to the unique portfolio we have of destinations within St. Charles, right? So why do people come visit St. Charles, live in St. Charles? This is a prime area that we can put another signature piece of property that, you know, reminds people why St. Charles is so unique and a great place to be in. So for me, you know, these are not going to be the final designs and if I could probably morph a couple of them together into one, that'd probably be my ultimate choice. But for me, I'd like to say, I like the amphitheater idea. Again, for me, conference center, you're missing some of that. You lost a lot of that, you know, obviously through the years with Pheasant Run, you know, can we bring some of that business back into town? So I think there's an opportunity there to use that more commercially. Thanks. Ron?
Thank you. Just to say this, one question. The Frontier Development has part of City Hall removed. Is that included in their plan or not?
Derek, please answer.
Is, is that, the plan, the plan shows that you, the slide you showed tonight showed part of City Hall being removed. Is that still in the plan?
That is physically still on the drawings, however, staff and who we've talked to on council has indicated that, that is something that is completely separate from the police department redevelopment.
But that's, so they're still talking about removing part of City Hall?
On, on...
Is that correct?
It's submitted back in April.
Okay, so they're...
It, it did still have it on there.
Okay, so that's, okay, thank you. So I want to clarify that. Personally, I'd like to see it to stay the way it is. Clean it up, make it a park. Unfortunately, I don't think the reality of that's going to happen. I don't think my colleague would all agree with that and, and I respect that too. The three out of four are just way too, too dense. They're just too big for downtown St. Charles. They need to be scaled back, which I understand these are concept plans, we can always negotiate. I'm not in favor of a hotel there and I've stated that before too. And of course, for me, parking, even though this is just a general idea, parking still needs to be addressed down there before any construction done, parking needs to be replaced before we build anything else. And I think the projects need more green space too, in front of it. Some of them have just all concrete or pavers, whatever they're going to put in there. I just think we need more, more green space. We have the walking path, but there's still need, in my opinion, for more green space.
So Ron, just again, so I can...
Sure. No, go ahead.
Processing. So, given your druthers, no development, you would...
You're, you're right. If I, my personal opinion, I would rather have just clean it up, make it nice, put some amenities in there, maybe a little smaller city-run restaurant like they do in places. Okay. But I understand that, I don't think that's going to happen. I respect that and, you know, I'm open, I'm always, I'm also open for ideas, like these plans are. But in a perfect world, yes, I would like to stay open.
Okay. And you had said that you weren't, so I've been on the council with you for a long time, right? And I don't remember your comment about, about not wanting a hotel. I'd like to...
I had, I had mentioned that, may have mentioned that at our meeting I had with last week with some members of staff.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
Okay.
What's your thoughts were on that?
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I just don't think hotel's appropriate down there. Now, that's just my opinion. I just don't think it's appropriate and I'm, since they haven't done the hotel study yet, I don't know, I don't know if there's a need for it or not.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the concept of a hotel down there.
Okay.
Just, you asked and I told you.
So it's interesting. So, so it seems that most of the council agrees that, you know, whether it's, you know, complementing the campus or some level of public amenity or some level of, you know, walkability for that area is really, I mean, front of mind for everybody. It seems to me that the council does have a, a realistic sense that at least if there's development that's going to be done, there'll be some sort of residential component to it, whether it's rental or it's condo or it's whatever. In order to get the investment from the private sector, there is going to have to be that level of component. So the, you know, the question is, is really, you know, one of scale and Ron, I really liked your comment about the sort of scale side of this and where you were going and that is, you know, we have, we have developments now that are from $50 million to $150 million in terms of anticipated budget. Now, I will submit to you, I've been in that side of the fence submitting proposals and they, they're, they're not there yet. They don't know what those numbers are down to the penny. So maybe just real quick, we go through again and say, okay, you know, are we looking for, you know, if you're on that scale, where are you? Are you on the 50 million or 150?
Start again?
Yeah.
As I mentioned before, due to prior projects that were done in St. Charles at different points in time throughout the history of St. Charles, the projects that we, the, the properties that we know about and still remember and relate to all the time are projects that were extremely bold when they were done at that time. Hotel Baker, the Arcata, Pheasant Run, these were bold, big projects. So I want something that is very visionary, something that is, is bold, that'll stand the test of time and be around for, for a long time.
So something, a statement?
Yes.
Excuse me, I would agree with Alderman Weber as well, but I'm looking at it more as a mirroring of what we've already accomplished on the south side of Main Street with the First Street developments. I mean, back then, when that development started, I believe we had a 25 or $30 million investment from the city through, through a TIF and the overall project is, was pushing about 75 million, I believe. So I'm not necessarily stating I'm gun-ho for a $115 million project, but I think what's doable, again, going back and forth with whatever developer it may be and the negotiations of the support, I think the 50 to 75, you know, even 100 million is, is okay to start, to look at. And could I add one more thing about the architectural in the last point? The one thing I didn't say is architecturally, you know, out of these four developments, one of them, I thought, did a great job of mirroring what this building is now. And the other two, even the third one, also mirrored what First Street is now, at least in my opinion. First Street meaning on the south side of Main Street. So I was happy to see two different types of architectural style, you know, again, I, I'm not saying everything should look like First Street does now, but at the same time, I was happy to see another development that if it wasn't going to mirror some of the buildings and architectural style of First Street, it would possibly mirror what we have here in this iconic building. Thank you.
Brian, thoughts?
I think the lower end provides more opportunity for public amenities. I think it's public property now, it's prime property, it's a beautiful location and, and I think people in our community should have the ability to, to go out there and enjoy it. I know there's going to be or need to be some sort of component, whether it's condos or townhouses or whatever it may be. I just think there's a great opportunity, a, a gathering space, let's say an amphitheater, an outdoor amphitheater, or something, something like that with a restaurant, some form of entertainment that brings people together, you got, you got a small residential component to it. You know, we haven't even talked about the value of the site. What's, what's it worth? I mean, I think, I think it's worth a lot of money. I mean, that's, that's a prime piece of property, it's a big piece of property. So, I think we need to look into what, what is it worth? What's the value of that? You know, and what, what are we getting out of it as a community, as a-
So, let's stay on that theme for a second, because I think that's an interesting concept, because, so the proposals tell us it's not worth anything, right? That in order for property to be developable, there, most of them are looking for some level of incentive, some of them are, most of them are looking for it probably for free, right? In order to build their development. So, so the private sector says, hey, from a development standpoint, the value's not, there, it isn't valuable, I'm not going to pay you anything for it. And that's a fairly common thing when you've got municipal-owned, you know, property. But, I mean, to your point now, maybe the value is much more in the fact of what you can give to residents for use, amenity, enjoyment, and I don't know that that's a dollar necessarily, but-
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I-
Yeah, and, and I'm, listen, I'm open to anything, as long as there's a, a sizable public component to it. I, I, I just don't think, how is anyone going to truly enjoy going to an apartment complex in this community? Let me go walk, take a walk along the apartment complex? What are they really getting out of it at the end of the day? Nothing. You go to a restaurant, grab a coffee, and off you go. What, what's in it for the people in the community? And that's, that's my concern, and I know we're just starting this process, and I get that, but I'm just kind of, in my head, the wheels are turning, like, well, what are we getting out of it at the end of the day? You know, and it doesn't seem like we're getting a lot. And some of these are really beautiful, the way they did it, you know, the, the architecture, some of the materials, but in the end, I'm, I'm also interested in knowing, well, what are we getting out of it? What's the public part of it for us?
Well, I mean, as a, as a, you know, I mean, as a, as a legislative body, one of the things that we get out of it is, you know, we provide housing, whether it's rental housing or condo housing, opportunity for homeownership, all of that kind of thing. I mean, I, there are benefits that go to, you know, just having something become developed. It is for, you know, the greater good. It's not necessarily for the immediate enjoyment like a bad shell, or-
Sure.
You know, those kinds of things. And I, I get your comment, I just, you know, I don't want to discount the fact that just having housing stock is a good thing for, you know, a municipality, generally speaking. That would be-
Yeah, I, I think this specific location, because it's so prime, really should incorporate just significantly more of a public amenity. We have other areas in our community, like Charlestown Mall, great opportunity over there to do a lot of different things. There's other areas, if we need housing, that we can, we can tackle, I think, in my opinion. I think, I just think we need to have an open mind with what we're doing here when it comes to a, a public amenity that everybody can enjoy. It's just a-
You did pick the most challenging-
I, I did, yes, I did.
You know, to answer your question, I'm, I'm more in the 50, the lower end. To Brian's point, I, I do believe that if we're in that realm, you know, we have more of an opportunity to have, again, less, I keep saying less is more, that have, have an opportunity for a public, uh, public amenity. And so, I'll, I'll throw it up to 75, and I'll join in 50 to 75.
Okay. All right. That sounds like a good number. 75? Dialing for dollars?
I think if you're, I think everybody spoke to something similar about concerns about the size of the footprint, the scope, and, you know, on the range, dollar amount, I, I'm not sure. I mean, there are valid points being made about, you know, what can you really fit in there? What is the best use of the space? I would lean towards being on the lower end and working our way up. I'll just go back to what Alderman Weber said. I, we do have a history of, of doing bold things, you know, and using this space, you know, we're not short on parks. You know, we're not short on public space. Now, I agree, I'm not foregoing in building, you know, 2,000 apartment, you know, units on that space, because I don't think that's the best use of the space. I really like the idea, and I should have said this earlier, about complementing your, your government campus space. You know, how can you do that? I don't, I'm not a developer, you know, and to put a price tag on that, what that investment looks like, I'm not sure, but I think starting small and seeing how far you can take it is probably a good way to begin.
Okay. Rita?
Um, two quick components to what your question is saying. I say, I would like to minimize the city's expected financial contribution. I, I, you know, seeing the, is the juice worth the squeeze? But to answer your question directly, I, too, lean more towards a conservative $50 million project price.
More modest.
Yeah, so for me, I'm more in favor of making a large calculated investment, but there's a caveat to that, right? So, for me, it's got to have positive experience for anyone who visits it. It's got to be a very positive experience. It can't have a negative impact to your community, meaning the traffic, the parking, things like that operationally around the city. Those studies got to come through, it's got to be proven that that's not going to be impacted. For me, this is an opportunity to really put something on that parcel that future generations are going to be proud of, right? This is a signature piece of land. We've got a lot of signature properties around St. Charles, it's an opportunity to invest, and I think the return will be a lot more than the investment, obviously, so for me, I'd be on the higher end of that.
Ron, I put you on the modest side. You can answer the question.
Okay, but I'll answer it, just, yeah, I'm on the modest side, thank you. But no, I just think, yeah, I like to keep at the low end of any incentives that we have to do, but I'm necessarily not looking for a wow factor. I'm looking for something that fits the character of St. Charles, that meets, that incorporates the past, the present, and the future. And some of these, in my opinion, don't do it. They're just big, bulky buildings. But everything's up for negotiation.
Right. Okay, so, so again, you know, so we've learned from the four submissions, we've learned, you know, that some point of it, if it's going to be a private sector development, it's probably going to be residential. We've learned that the council now has, you know, I would say modest and mid-level investment expectations for this site. We've learned that we want, you know, specific, you know, public amenities as opposed to, you know, simply an apartment building standing there. I think that that was sort of universally said here. So, the question is, is, well, how do we go to the next level of our discovery phase, right? So, first level of discovery phase, send out the RFP, we got four responses. Now, I will submit, I'm a little disappointed in that we only got four responses, I thought we would have gotten more, so that tells us something about this site, you know, you know, in and of itself. But the question is, is what's the best way to continue and dialogue, right? And, and what's the best way to learn more? And that's really what this is about, to me. And it's less about, okay, well, we're going to pick, you know, a horse, and we're going to start to engage with them and ride it until it works or it doesn't work. To me, you know, it's all about, okay, the next phase of us figuring out what the right use is for the site and what the public wants, what we're all hearing in the community. And from my own standpoint, as a developer, I would not want to be in a party of four. To me, it feels, again, and I think this is staff's recommendation, too, of, you know, let's pick a couple that we can continue the dialogue with, and then, you know, I think that makes all the sense in the world, and the question is, is this council ready to pick, you know, two of the four right now to just continue the dialogue? And again, I would submit, that's the only commitment we're making. You know, what you don't want to do is waste a bunch of time and waste a bunch of resources, our own, staff, or the developers in the community. You really want them to engage with you, and I think that if you narrow the field a little bit, you're going to get better engagement. So, that's my own, you know, position. You know, I don't know that we need to go person by person. Does anyone have a competing thought?
Just completely throwing it out here, when we developed this RFP, originally it was, we were, before many, many members of the council, of this council came on board, we, it was going to be, I think, an application process, right? It was a little more in-depth process, but then we scaled it back and said, hey, let's do a concept plan, because we could just tell everybody to, the thanks but no thanks, kind of. So, I guess a question for you, could we just, say, just put this on hold and go out and ask for, or, could we do another round of solicitations, or is that just not, like, so?
So, my own opinion is, is that you've got your, you've got what you got. I don't know that you're going to get a lot more. I don't know that by tweaking an RFP or doing any changes, you're going to get much more. I think for us, bang, bang for the buck would be, you know, picking a couple and really engaging and seeing, what's the stomach for doing a public improvement? What's the stomach for scaling back? What's the stomach for more residential units, less residential units, a hotel, a no hotel, whatever it is? You know, really sort of getting into it with a couple of players to see what we can learn from. You know, I think what happens with that is you wind up, you know, if, if you start going down a road and you're hand-in-hand with a developer, and now it starts to feel good, you start making, you know, you start that relationship, you start making that commitment. If it goes nowhere, it goes nowhere. I mean, the site sits, sits, and sits. So, again, my recommendation would be for us to pick a couple and really engage with them, and see what, where it takes us.
And I think that may be part of staff's recommendation, too, coming out of some of what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Correct. That was the interest in just facilitating the process and making sure that we can continue to narrow it down and actually vet some of these proposals a little bit further, and get some of the questions that council clearly has answered and discussed.
Thank you. Brian?
Yeah, I, I personally would like to ask questions of three of the developers, Collins being the third, you know, because in their proposal, they, they stated that they're very open to different concepts, different ideas. And to me, that, that makes us, that's a statement. It says they're, they're open-minded, so why not rather make it a couple? I mean, they, they made it very clear in their proposal that they're willing to discuss different ideas and concepts. So, for me, I, I don't want to limit it to just two. I would like, I would like to, I mean, I have three in mind.
Okay, let's start with you. How about the three?
Uh, the three would be, it's, it's Murphy, Frontier, and then Collins would be, would be my three.
Frontier, Collins is-
Flaherty.
Flaherty, right? Okay.
Actually, I, well, I was going to go for, I mean, why don't we just, you know, we have, our comments are public now, we, they, these developers know where we're thinking, why don't we just go back to all four and see, and, and, you know, just see where they're at, and then, then make a decision at that time? I feel it might be more judicious, more equitable to do that, because if you eliminate even one, or like, with your eye on the tree-
No, it's a good, that's a good point.
They, I just don't, I fear that they might feel that they didn't have the opportunity to respond to our comments.
So, so, I, I understand that. I really do. And I, I get that they've all spent time, you know, to get us to this point. But, you know, and I, and again, I'm sorry, I put my developer hat on on occasion when I'm sitting up here. I want to know where I'm ranked, because to be frank, if, if, if I was fourth on, you know, quarters of the council blitz, I don't want to spend the next six months helping us along on our learning curve on this site.
Or it could be two months, I, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So, so-
So, let's do three, then, maybe just to knock those-
I was going to say, maybe what we could do is just say our top two. Would that be fair? And then we can make a decision whether we want to pursue. And Brian, I already got your three, so you're off the hook for two.
I'll start. I'm going to give two, but I'm going to talk about all four. The first one, Flaherty and Collins, right from the rip on their proposal, they basically asked for 20% support from the city, and they have no answer for, for parking. So, right from the get-go, that's not going to work for me. T2 and Retown, the three different phases, constant interruption, we don't need more construction interruption in the city. I'd like to be, all be done in one full scope. That leaves me with two. The Murphy Development Group, which is at that $60 million mark, which, you know, a lot of people have a comfort level there, and they're asking for zero incentives, so that'd be, that'd be one of my top two, and then Frontier would be another one of the, the top two, based on the boldness, and their ask from the city is maybe around 10%, so I'm only going to give you two, Mr. Pinkwell.
Thank you, sir.
My two would be Frontier Development, which is number two, and number three, MDG. Again, going back to what I was originally stating about the commercial and retail aspect of it, I, again, I'm not looking for Murphy.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Frontier and MDG.
Yeah, I'm DG.
I'm sorry, yeah. Again, I'm not sure where this is going to lead in regards to how much retail, or what type of retail or commercial uses will be down there, but at the same time, I don't want to lock it out. I want that opportunity to be there, I want that to, to be part of it. And then, in addition, the architectural styles, stylus I stated as well, obviously Frontier showed some grand, as Alderman Weber stated, architectural styles that, that I stated earlier mirrored our building here, and the other group, MDG, had some, in my opinion, again, architectural style that mirrored what we were doing on First Street on the other side of the river, on the other side of Main Street. So, again, number two and number three are the ones that are leading the pack for me right now.
David? Brian, you got the, you got the, you snuck one in.
I would, number one, Murphy, that's my, my humble example, as I mentioned earlier, so I think there's a lot of opportunity. The initial concept has a lot of green space in it, I like that, again, not trying to regurgitate my former comments, again, I repeat myself, but, and then Frontier is the more grand vision, and as I mentioned, that concept of the bookends, I think we, you know, take our bookends and work with these folks to come to some, some happy medium, and at the, again, at the risk of beating a dead horse, obviously with assurances. As you said, Mayor, I know that the City Hall is not involved in that. Yes, then I would go with those two. And Murphys.
Okay. I jump on the Frontier and Murphy camp as well, just from the, uh, Brian?
Same, but I'd like to get whatever pass Alderman Warhol has, because I, I do like the-
Sorry.
I do, I do like-
Do you have any one of those available?
I, I would like to get that if I could. I, there are, there are concerns, you know, in their proposal that Alderman Weber mentioned, but I do go back to, they explicitly said being open, you know, to different ideas, different concepts.
So, back up to Flaherty?
If you're picking two, it's, it's Frontier and it's Murphy for me, but I, I do, I, I am interested in learning more about what that might be.
Okay. All right, I gave you the pass.
I appreciate it.
Rita?
Very generous, Tom. Very generous.
It's very rare that I have this opportunity.
Thanks for not letting it go to your head.
Thanks.
Yeah. I am, again, you know, sharing my, my preference and my vision for this project, Murphy.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to be a broken record here, but I, so for me, Frontier and Murphy are probably my top two choices. Love the open spaces along the river that they're showing. I think there's opportunities with further discussions if we want to tweak a certain things there, but I think there's so many activities and events you could hold in that open space. I just love both of those concepts.
My first one would be Murphy Development. I'll put in Flannery and Collins, because just like Murphy, they're not asking for a hotel. I like that part of it. I would, I have a problem with Frontier-
I'm sorry, Ron, Flaherty?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Frontier, Flannery and Collins and Frontier, only because those two right there, well, Murphy I like in general, the other one does not have a hotel component. And Frontier, until I get clarification on that City Hall part, I'm real, I cannot, I can't go with them right now until I get clarification of what they're going to do at City Hall.
So, so from, from, from my math right now, it looks like Murphy and Frontier are the two that we would continue our discovery phase with for sure. And I would submit for Flaherty, and I hope staff would be okay with this, I would, I would be honest with them and say, listen, these were overwhelming, you know, top two of the four, but if you wanted to spend the time, you know, we had some interest in exploring that idea that you were open to new things, and leave it up to them. If they say, well, you know, no, I don't get it, then at least come back to the council and tell us that, but I think, I think that's fair for them, and I think that's fair for the comments we had up here. Do you need a, do you need a, a vote on this?
We do not need a formal vote, since we're at a concept level and still just looking for discussion with the developers.
It's just, I know that we're providing you with a recommendation for moving ahead with our suggestions, is right?
So, for sure, Murphy and Frontier, and then you're going to approach Flaherty and say, hey, it wasn't-
Absolutely.
It wasn't overwhelming, but-
Correct.
You know, there is some sentiment on the council asked questions, so.
And for the record, Mr. Lencioni provided feedback that I think the council has at their table, but his top two, and this, this commentary can be made available within[1750.51] their table, but his top two, and this commentary can be made available within the minutes, I can give it to City Clerk, City Clerk Nancy, but Frontier and Murphy were his top two. So I think it aligned, even though he was not part of the conversation, this can be shared.
Do you want to open it up to?
One question, I'm sorry, the plan sounds fine, just hypothetically, what if the fourth one does say, hey, I want to, I want another shot at the?
I guess my suggestion would be because of staff's recommendation, most of the feedback up there, even for the ones that provided top three, they weren't really.
I, I mean, I totally, I, I'm sure it's probable they won't, but possible.
You know, I don't, you know, I don't think we hang up on people.
Yeah, that's okay.
If they call, answer the phone.
I agree, I think that would be.
We'll certainly reach out to them as well and explain how the meeting went here this evening, and engage with them a little bit and see if they have any interest in moving forward or anything like that, and we will communicate that with council.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, so at this time, given kind of the backdrop of what we talked about this evening, anyone is welcome to come up to the podium and provide comment, please state your name and address for the record, but again, please just remember, you know, what we talked about this evening, that this is just exploration phases, that the consensus has been to have some, obviously, questions with developers, there'll be plenty of opportunity to provide specific input on specific pieces of the proposal you do or do not like, and certainly through the process, you will receive more detail than you've been provided tonight as a public forum. You'd have to come up to the podium, please. Hopefully the microphone works now. Name an address, please, for the record.
My name is Mary Hill, I live at 1003 South Fourth Street, and I have two concerns. My first concern is, is I really think, I agree with Brian, that it should have a lot of amenities for people, because, I mean, I love hotels, I often stay in hotels, but if it's a hotel, it belongs to whoever, it doesn't belong to us. And if there's an apartment complex, I think of that nice apartment complex on the river in St. Charles, there's a riverfront there, I've never been there, because it belongs to the people who live in those apartments, and so that's a concern. I know that we all love the development on the south side of 64 here, but it is my opinion that we, something that was very important to me, the Blue Goose, we lost it, I don't think we would have lost it if they hadn't been forced to move into the bigger building. And my main concern is, I really hope that Frontier clarifies that, because I love the city building, the 1882 building, it's a landmark, and I think that things like that are really valuable to the city, I realize that now we're in a period of history where tearing down old buildings is very popular, but I think in the future, it will be an amenity to the city that people come to places that have history and have a background, and I think I would like to see that seen.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is Dean Demas, and I live on the corner of Chestnut and North Second Avenue, 304, and it just strikes me that all four of these look like 10 pounds of flour going into a five-pound bag, they're massive by my standards. Also, if they aren't willing to pay for riverfront property, that probably shows what they think the development's gonna be worth. I feel like the historic district backs up to this, and there's not even a nod to anything historic, it doesn't seem any of the designs really take advantage of the river, and I also would like to see more residential where the parking would be part of where the person lives, because these massive parking garages around St. Charles really have to stop, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Anderson, 712 Horn Street, I left the meeting for a while, I walked the property, beautiful property in the back, the parking lot, looking at the grass, and I was particularly looking at parking. We have a full house here today, very nice to come to our City Hall on the, on the ground floor, walk in, not a deck, not anything, so if we can keep this complex going, and that was brought up by some people, this building, and the park behind it is very open, the police building, 10th State, into the hillside, you want to do something, great, but this complex, the way it sits, is, I think, wonderful, I was sitting in the middle of Heinz Lumber Yard, who remembers that? Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Dr. Steve Smut, 403 South Sixth Street, I'm Vice Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. Just to address the summary of Frontier Development by our, our director, there was a quote, "old world charm," and when I think of the word saints in St. Charles, I think of medievalism and old world, so it can tie together, and big concern is this issue that we have no mission of the old city building, which is Romanesque architecture, that's old world. We have our Kane County Courthouse, which is Romanesque architecture, it's also 1892, and it's old world charm too, so we should maybe be asking Frontier Development to start thinking, if your, if your old world charm tagline is gonna be carried forward, let's see some architecture that's old world, like Gothic Revival and Tudor Revival, and of course, Romanesque. Now, it's a challenge to meet up with Art Deco and Art Modern, that's gonna be your biggest challenge, to do something along with this, but there, there's opportunity for beautiful architecture and to make something that brings people, the public, into this area, and someone wants to see, hey, I want to go to old St. Charles, you know, it's got that old world charm, make that tagline really stick to it, Frontier, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure, come on up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Matthew Reed, I live at 707 South Sixth Avenue, and once, one thing I see that has not been addressed in any of the proposals or in our discussion is the fate of the dam, and I think we really need to take a holistic view of that, that dam is aging, the national trend is to remove dams, and Carpenter'sville is gonna be removing their dam, Oak Brook is removing the Salt Creek Dam, which abuts historic growling mill in Fullersburg, and I think we have to take that into consideration, that if that dam stays, there's gonna be repair costs involved with that. Also, if we look at these proposals as they are, I think that the idea of bringing the dam down, just, it won't fly, these, all of these proposals show that channelized edge there, and what I would recommend, what I would like to see, is a copy of the 2017 Open Now River Park Report, provided to each developer that council chooses to speak with again, and I'd like to see a proposal showing their idea of what that might look like were that dam to be removed, perhaps something like what was done with the Seventh Avenue Creek project, native plantings, walking trails, things like that, much more open space for the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate them.
Art Lemke, 3214 Black Hawk Trail here in the city of St. Charles, a resident of St. Charles, and one of the things I noticed in the course of the discussion and in the drawings, and a lot of these have just been, apparently, we, as a group or as your group, has just received this information, but it was very clear in the original RFP, as much as what we said 2020, that there is a dam site, not a dam site, but a well site included in and surrounded by the existing police station, and maybe that's in the detail, but I just don't see anything about that, and certainly, any attempt to secretly or sub-secrety or shadow out the fact that there's an inclusion of the City Hall buildings, I think that development either should be non-conforming and shut out, or it ought to be very clear, and it should be that developer's responsibility to accept that he knows that there's no City Hall complex that is to be included in this. So my sense is it's, it's non-conforming, but you may choose to move forward if there is some admission by the developer that was never his intent. About the hotel, and I remember, we were sitting here in this group, and we talked about a hotel across the street, kitty corner from us, and it was referred to as, well, you know, who wants that, it's, right now, it's just the next shiny object, and what we had instead, we have the building that now hosts Alter Brewing, I'm very proud of that, so it's questionable whether a hotel was appropriate then or now, there's more to be said, I'll leave it to the others.
Thank you. Sure, come on up.
Good evening, City Council, my name's Philip Lewis, I live at 1321 Ash Street, had, I've had the privilege of representing this area for 12 years on the Kane County Board, and I speak from that experience when I say that the quality of life drives the quality of a community. And when we think about the opportunity that you as a city council have, I think you are way too narrow on your thinking, and I appreciate that, that you, you are a developer and that's your thinking, I appreciate that. I want you to think more in terms of Daniel Burnham, I want you to think more in terms of Phil Elstrom. These people drove their, their thinking, drove the thinking of their communities, and the quality of the community improved dramatically because of the quality of life. The Union Pacific Railroad is adjacent to this site, the Kane County Forest Preserve condemned the West End, and I participated in that, as one of the first steps to cause a walkable, bikeable circulation from east to west through the city of St. Charles, which we currently do not have. We have a north-south circulation, walkable, bikeable circulation in this community, driven by Phil Elstrom's vision 40 years ago, 50 years ago. The site has numerous infrastructure issues, wells, it has a water tank, well, it has numerous wells, all of which the city will need to replace at substantial cost. The city, well, the developers, I mean, I was kind of astounded that a developer would ask for $20 million from citizens of St. Charles, I'm a little bit astounded at that, and I just question, if I were in your seat, I would ask for a proposal from the St. Charles Park District. If the city were to donate the land, what kind of a vision would the St. Charles Park District have for the property? I would ask the Kane County Forest Preserve, if the city of St. Charles gave you this land, what vision would you have? I mean, they, these, these entities have built numerous, numerous pieces of infrastructure in this community, they should be consulted, they should be asked what their vision might be. The Illinois Park Commission is deeply interested in building, you know, walkable, bikeable, community-oriented environments, they would be very interested in this opportunity. So I encourage you to move in that direction, at least pursue that direction, to the same degree that you pursue these, quote, "economic development" issues. I think a group of 10 people, the, our community deserves this group of 10 people to pursue all possible opportunities, and I do not see you doing that, so I would encourage you to do that, reach out, this, this community was built on philanthropy, the Bakers contributed dramatically to this community. There are many people in this community who will contribute to development of this site, and this leadership needs to reach out and see what's out there, what kind of ideas are out there. And I would be pleased to attend another session of this council to talk about the philanthropic use of this beautiful site here, which I believe could also include, and I quote, "the east-west Union Pacific," because it's a natural drops, dropping site, it's a natural destination site, and will allow the entire community to circulate to downtown in a very family-friendly environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Rasmussen, 10 Illinois Street, it's been almost 20 years since we started First Street, which at that time, we were a pretty small town, in my opinion, and I think First Street was a reasonable success, going through some tough times in the economy, and I think we can all look at that today and say it was a pretty exciting development to urbanize our downtown. And the urbanization of, of the suburbs now in this country is a significant growth factor, and I think as Mayor Vitac started this discussion tonight, this site is as much of an opportunity and even more so than First Street was. And the continuance of urbanizing our downtown, I think, is a decision that many councils have made for many years, and that's where we stand today. I'm a proponent of additional development, I'd like to see that urbanization continue, and, and the things that we need in that urbanization is people, we need people, and with people, we need parking, everybody loves when I talk parking, because I've been doing it for 20 years, actually, everybody talked parking to me for about 15 years, and we did it on the west side, so we need a little more parking in anything we do to help solve the east side problems. But if we want this town to be what I think many of these councils have envisioned over these many years that I've been here, we need more people in our downtown, we need more restaurants in our downtown, we need more commercial space in our downtown, and a couple of these plans brought that to the forefront. We did, as Mr. Lemke said, have a hotel planned for where the Riverloft Building is, we had preliminary approval, I did the study, a couple people on this current council have that study, that study was crystal clear, we need a hotel, that's what's gonna bring the people here. The spending that the hotel would bring is, at the time, was, if I recall, 15 or 20 million in additional spending in our restaurants and commercial space, and that was when we had Pheasant Run, which I think, if I recall, had 450 rooms, and we needed it then. So I've been a proponent of putting a hotel on this site since the day the police station moved, the size and scope, I won't speak to that, I think another study that we spent a lot of money in at the time could be done now, that will kind of update that and should show even more of a need. Back to, I think Alderman Werbal stated, the different types of residential, it'd be nice to see a for-sale component here, we have no for-sale condos right now available in St. Charles, we sold all ours, Frontier Development's doing a rental project there on the old Chamber Building, but we don't have any for-sale, I know that J and B is gonna bring a new one on, but it's not quite as good of a location as this, so I think a combination of all those things, rental apartments, for-sale condominiums, hotel space, which I think is a significant impact to our downtown, if that's what we want our downtown to be. Do the research, I'll get you the old study if you need it, it will tell you the revenue it will generate and the people that it will bring, the difference is it brings people every day or two that are different people to our downtown. If you're gonna put people in these apartment buildings that we currently have, that Frontier's gonna build down the road, or someone's gonna build here, they're not gonna have space for their guests to come in for their out-of-town engagements, they need more hotels, the Baker's a tremendous hotel, the Salists have done a great job with that, we just need more, and different, that's a very eclectic boutique hotel, it only serves a certain clientele, we're not hitting the masses here, we are currently giving that business to our other communities, particularly Geneva, and I think we as a city should grab that back, we are the destination now, it's got, it's been created, let's just finish, finish that, and this is an opportunity, I think, that you folks can put that together, so appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? And there's still plenty of time too, on other days to comment, I'll remind everyone. Go ahead, sir.
Evening, Council, I'm Al Watts, I'm Community Engagement Director for Preservation Partners of the Fox Valley, we operate four historic sites, two in St. Charles at Leroy Oaks, the Durant House and the Shoal School, and then two in Geneva, Fabian Villa and the Japanese Garden. We also educate about the value of historic preservation, that's just one I wanted to talk to you about, since the buildings or the properties we're talking about are all in the central historic district. So the purpose of a historic district is to preserve a community's sense of place and protect its property values. Adhering to St. Charles' historic preservation ordinance encourages the continued vitality of downtown as a place where people want to live, work and play, which I think we all want. Since 1892, the city has owned and occupied at least a portion of this area of downtown with the construction of the first city building, that three-story building over here, it's a red brick, red brick, Romanesque-style structure, it's very beautiful. In the 1930s, the terracotta brick building was added to its south, and then the municipal center, which we're in now, was was added to its south. And then the municipal center, which we're in now, was added in 1940, where it kind of began the transformation of downtown St. Charles from an industrial center to more of a retail, restaurant-type place. Because as if you recall, before this building was here, there were factories, creameries, all industrial stuff. There's railroads right through here. All that is gone now, but the municipal campus is still here. And I really like the idea that older person Rita mentioned about, you know, enhancing that area that we already have here, this municipal campus, which we've had at least since 1892. So when you are considering the development in this historic district, you need to consider how the development's going to affect the community's charm. The historic district is part of the community's charm. And so it's important that the buildings and landscapes that remain, you know, make sense to remain, and ones that don't make sense should be altered or replaced. And there are a few buildings, I think, in this area that, you know, make sense to be replaced, and some that don't. The main thing, though, is the new buildings that are going to be new buildings here, it's important that they're compatible with their historic neighbors. Embracing the city's historic preservation ordinance, as well as national standards, help guide us all in creating the positive change that St. Charles wants.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Anyone else this evening? Okay. Any, go ahead, sir.
Sorry for the second trip. Dean Bemus, corner of Chestnut, North Second Avenue. As I understand that there was a radium treatment facility put in just adjacent to where a lot of these show parking garages. And the reason that was done was the need for more water for St. Charles. I think we all realize that water is becoming a more and more precious commodity. And I just want to make sure, before anybody goes blasting into the bedrock to build a seven-story or six-story metropolis, that a study is done to make sure it doesn't adversely affect the wells three and four that were located right there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else from staff this evening? No? And we do not have an executive session. Okay, so at this point, we're looking for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Weber will second.
Moved by Werbal, seconded by Weber. Any questions or comments before we adjourn? Nancy, please call the roll.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Petrowa?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Dussner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kalkitis?
Yes.
Calamaris?
Yes.
Haylightner?
Yes.
Bongar?
Yes.